Good evening. I'd like to call to order the March 26, 2019 Board Meeting for Methacton School District Board of Directors. Please rise for the pledge.
The pledge is that we declare the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The public is hereby advised of the audio and video recording of this meeting for the purposes of rebroadcasting. Executive sessions of the Board were held on March 25, 2019 in the Farina Administration Building for the purpose of reviewing and discussing personnel matters related to the employment of specific members of the Methacton Education Association and the Methacton Administrative Organization and collective bargaining with the Methacton Education Association, and on March 26, 2019, in the high school just prior to the meeting this evening for the purpose of discussing confidential special education student matters. All Board members are in attendance this evening. Recognition of guests and scheduled speakers. Dr. Serbi.
Thank you, Ms. President. This evening, we have four guest speakers. We have a staff recognition, Master Plan bond parameters, a 2019-20 budget update, and the hour-head forward funding debate analysis. So first, it gives me great pleasure to introduce Ms. -- or Dr. Jamie Gravenese here to represent Methacton High School in recognition of two of our outstanding educators and support staff members at Methacton High School. Dr. Gravenese?
Thank you so much for having me tonight. Dr. Sergini is on his deathbed, otherwise he would have been here. So I have the great pleasure of honoring Josie Matty. Josie has been with Methacton School District for 20 years. She currently works as an Assistant Principal's Administrative Assistant in the East Wing Office with a special focus on supporting many activities and clubs at Methacton High School. Josie is a dedicated and caring member of the Methacton family who works tirelessly to meet the many diverse needs of the people and organizations that rely on her office. Josie is a welcoming and caring presence in the East Wing Office and an invaluable member of the MHS staff. And I have to tell you, I am especially honored to be speaking on her behalf because she was my administrative assistant when I went into administration, and she was the backbone to making sure everything got done. She is wonderfully dedicated, amazingly caring, and she puts every child first in that building. So she is just -- she's the best. So, thank you, Josie.
We'd like to allow the Board members to extend their recognition to you as well. Serve your own line before the vowing table. We'll shake hands.
Congratulations, Mr. Serbi. Tony Cardillo. But just to share with you a little bit about Tony, he is the longest-serving teacher at Methacton High School. He has mentored and guided students as a teacher and a coach for more than three decades. As a teacher of oceanography and environmental science, Tony helps students to see the hands-on, real-world relevance of science in their lives. As a coach, Tony has endeavored to guide MHS students to success on the playing field. As a true mentor, Tony has taught students how to take the skills that they learn in the classroom and on the playing field and translate those skills into successes in life beyond high school. Tony is a beloved and invaluable member of the Methacton High School family. Thank you, Tony.
Next on the list of scheduled speakers, we have PFM. We have representatives from PFM here this evening on the Master Plan Bond Parameters. This relates to Item 9E1 on the agenda. Glenn Willard.
Good evening. Glenn Willard with PFM. Zach Willard and John Cox. Eckert seems your bond lawyer. There's a handout with a blue cover page we're going to walk you through quickly. We've been working with the Finance Committee for some time getting ready for the 2019 calendar year financing, and so that's what we're here for tonight. I think everything's ready to go. On Page 1, maybe the best news is that interest rates have really cooperated and have gone in our favor, so spend a minute or two on that. At the bottom of Page 1, it was back around October, November, interest rates were moving higher. The Federal Reserve had said there he thought they would raise rates four times in 2019. Since then, they've changed their tune and have gone the other way. Now, the markets think they might even lower rates at the end of 2019. So in that bottom chart, you can see for this index, this is the MMD Index, which is the Dow Jones for municipal bonds, if you will. Interest rates have gone from a 270 to about a 2. That's a 70 basis points or seven tenths of 1% lower. So that's great news. We're talking about pricing your bonds maybe two months from now, so have to keep our fingers crossed. You never know, but they definitely have gone in your favor. So I just wanted to mention that quickly. If you go to the next page, this is a snapshot of all your debt. We have the debt service payments at the top of the page. Your local share of the payments, netting out state aid, is in the middle section. Column 30 on the right, your average is around $9.3 million for the next bunch of years, and then it starts to decline. And what the team is recommending is that we do what's called a wraparound bond issue and structure the new payments so that as they decline in column 30, money that's already in place in the debt service category in your budget can be reallocated to the 2019 bond. So we're going to show you how that works, but that's called a wraparound bond issue, and we'll be wrapping around column 30. Okay? The next page is a pro forma of what the bond issue is going to look like. Again, those existing local payments are in column number 9. Let's see, around $9,300,000. And in column number 2, under state law, we have to have some principal payments every year, so they're very small. And then as column 9 drops off, you can see in column 2, the payments go up. And what happens is in column 10, this is the old bond issues, the new bond issues are in column 10, so your payments were up to around $9,500,000. And then there's still some drop-off for bond issues if you decide to -- the Board decides to use them in future years. There's capacity down towards the second half of column number 10. So this bond issue is $6.5 million. The interest rates are in column number 3. These are very conservative interest rates. We think you'll, again, depending on where the market is two months from now, if you were selling bonds today, you probably would do about a half of 1% better than what I'm showing you here. So this is just conservative until we get closer to the sale of the bond. So that's the bond issue. That's the structure the Finance Committee likes, and that's what we're going to ask you to take action on when you're ready. The schedule is on Page 4. If you go to the next page, your next couple meetings are there. We'll work with the administration on which ones you need us to attend. But the final voting meeting would be April 23. That would be the Parameters Resolution authorizing the team to go forward and lock in the interest rates. We'll get all the approvals from the state. And towards the end of May, this schedule says May 21, but we'll be flexible on that. Towards the end of May would be when we actually lock in the interest rates. Okay? And then the last page is what we've been showing everybody for the last couple of years, how you have the capacity to issue bonds into the future if you decide to do so. But so the only action now is the 2019 bond issue for the $6.5 million on Page 3. If you have no questions, or I'm happy to answer any questions. If you have any, there's a quick resolution. Yes, sir?
Yeah, Glenn, thanks for being here tonight. Just more of a comment than a question, just for the rest of the Board. So right now, the total scope for Master Plan work sits at about 6.8. We do have the additional work coming for the MEP project at the high school, perhaps an extra $1 to $2 million. And then we also have all these funds sitting on the side, the committed fund balance from last year. We have the -- what did I miss? The $1 million in excess from the bond from 2018. So Glenn, correct me if I'm wrong, but we've got until next month then to finalize exactly what the number is that we're going to give to you, correct?
Yes. We'd like to get it for the final paperwork. Yes.
Okay. That's all. So this number at 6.5 may go up or down, depending on what we all decide to do as a Board.
Right. And is that why the Parameters Resolution says up to $8.5 million? To allow for that flexibility?
Right.
But what you're presenting here assumes $6.5 million.
It's $6.5. The other thing with the parameters is if any of the maturities need to exceed what we have in there, that gives us room to do that.
John?
Yeah, I just wanted to make two comments regarding 9D and E of your agenda this evening. So before you this evening, we have two resolutions related to the financing. One, reimbursement resolution. Under the tax code, in order for you to start a project, before you close on a financing, it's always best to adopt a reimbursement resolution that says you intend to reimburse yourself from the proceeds of the financing once you close, so that you're not committing that cash permanently to the project. So that accomplishes that. That's purely an administrative item for purposes of the Internal Revenue Code. The second is a preliminary proceed resolution authorizing the financing team to start moving forward with preparing the Parameters Resolution, the official statement, and other offering documents related to the bond issue. As you indicated and observed, the numbers in those resolutions are intentionally conservative, and you do have time to update us on the exact amount of the final sizing of the transaction as you continue to refine what capital projects you're going to undertake this year. So again, those are intentionally conservative numbers in those resolutions at this time. But we'll finalize, we'll get closer with the Parameters Resolution, and then the exact amount that will be the bond issue, the exact size of the bond issue, technically, we would have up until Tuesday, May 21, or thereabouts, when we actually go to price the bonds.
Any questions for members of the Board? If not, well, thank you very much for the information. Next on the agenda, we have Mr. Bricker, who will be presenting the 2019-20 budget. This is the March update that was presented to the Finance Committee meeting. Dr. Sisnovich, if you wouldn't mind, if you could bring the screen down for us. We're going to stay seated here while he projects onto the screen. There should be a budget handout for each Board member with a green cover.
Good evening. I'm going to run you through the budget update. I'm only going to focus on this information I changed. Obviously, I'm not going to rehash some of the information in the interest of time. It's stagnant information. It won't change from budget to budget. The budget timeline, as everyone knows, we're currently in the February to April situation as we're refining the budget with the Finance Committee and the different departments. One of the slides that we were asked to add was the millage history rate. As you look at this, you can see that Methacton is ranked 10th in regards to Montgomery County. Over the last year, our increase was the fourth lowest at 1.98%, and then over the last five years, we were the fifth lowest in the increase in the millage. The March update, we've updated revenue. It does have the real estate taxes, obviously, is the largest piece, then comes the state revenue, and then you're looking at the basic education fund and the Act 511 taxes. The assumptions that changed for the March update include a real estate tax increase of 2.157%. This is down from the 2.29 to 8%. Takes into consideration the most recent February 2019, February 28, 2019 county assessment data. It assumes the interest rates on CDs at 2.35% and 1.75% on bank investments. The 2.35% has been holding steady for the last two months. I haven't seen any changes in that currently. The proposed preliminary budget, we already went over that information at our last meeting. With regards to revenue, the updates, actually, with all those changes, the real estate tax increased by $70,262.86. Assessments increased by about $1 million. Occupational tax increased by $5,000, but the earned income tax decreased by $5,000, offsetting themselves. That information is directly provided by Burckheimer. And the interest on the CDs increased by about $105,000 as the rates increased and we adjusted accordingly. The assessment tracking, this is something new that we added in, so you can see how the assessments are tracking from update to update. You know, lower providence increased by about $3.3 million in assessed value, while Worsister went down by about $2.2 million. A net increase is $1.068 million. Based on our current mills, a 30.6911%. That gives an additional, or the projected mills, I should say, not current. The additional tax revenue is about $33,000. Local revenue went up by about $34,600. It's really related to the earnings on our investment. The taxes levied by the LEA actually decreases because we were able to lower the millage increase by that percentage. State and federal numbers remain constant, so there's no changes in those items. And then with regards to the real estate taxes, you can see here how the millage increase from the proposed budget to the March budget went down from 2.29, there's a 2.8 after that, to 2.15, and that's a 0.14% decrease. The overall change, as I said, was a reduction in $73,000 in gross tax levy, which is the amount that translates into a collection rate of a $70,262.86 decrease in local real estate taxes. We're putting this slide for the analysis on the millage and how that affects the homeowner based on $173,660 average home value. The taxes would be $5,329.82. That's a small increase of $112.53 annually. The March budget update, salaries and benefits still comprise about 68% of the budget. Debt service is about 9.3%, while operating income is 22.4%. There's been no changes to the staffing at this time. The historical staffing is also stagnant at this point, so we'll skip right past them. And the staffing request, just to point out, these are staffing requests that have not been included in the budget. Assumptions and changes for the March budget with regards to expenses. Personnel costs decreased by $55,867.83. Cost to group insurance decreased by $18,809.25, and that is made up by the second of the three looks with regards to the medical and prescription, healthcare. The vision and dental remain flat. Social Security's and PISers decreased by $23,430. Professional education services decreased by $59,615. Transportation costs increased by almost $200,000, and fuel costs decreased by $6,875. We'll skip past the preliminary budget expenses. So on the five-year projections, we were asked to add this information back in from where it was on the Finance Committee, so I will go over it since it was not going over at the Finance Committee. The items in red are what has changed. The growth rate is based on the assessed values as of February 28. That's the most recent information that was provided by the assessor's office. The millage increase was changed to 2.157%. And there are the changes that you'll see in the five-year projections. So where is this put? It puts it at a total revenue of $112,666,439. It increases to revenue of a flat tax with no increases to $116,385,685. But the expenditures, you'll note, will increase at the current rates to $125,619,518, which gives us a negative operating balance of $9.2 million. Again, that's with no property tax increases from 2021 to 2024. We include the property tax increases. Previously, we used projections for the Act 1 increases, but we decided this year that we're going to stick with what the current Act 1 is because some of the projections were significantly higher and misleading when we actually looked at the next years when we got there. So we're using a 2.3% increase for those years. You'll notice that while revenue does increase to $123,823,673, it does reduce the net operating loss over that five-year period down to $1.8 million roughly. And it still does give us an unassigned fund balance, that is, $3.5 million after that is completed. The five-year comparison with regards to the major areas, as you see, the biggest one is that you'll see from the budget of 2019 versus the March update is revenues increased by $2 million, which is the $70,263 to the March update. When you look at the current budget to the March update, there's a $771,000 increase in other local revenue, and that's, again, the interest income. And then the expenditures are also summarized. They're all summarized on the prior page and just more at a high level here. Budget variables, things that will impact our budget as we go through. Obviously, the assessed values. Each month, we get the assessed values. At the end of this month, March 30, 29, this Friday, we will be getting the update for where the assessor will stand with regards to the March numbers, and we'll update the budget accordingly. Interest rates, as I said, they have not moved. We are working on increasing some of the other operating accounts, but at this point in time, we're kind of maxed out because the rates just aren't moving at this point in time. Expenses, the healthcare, we'll be getting healthcare look three. I will note that Norristown did pull out of the healthcare consortium effective yesterday. Their Board voted to remove themselves from the healthcare consortium. It has its pluses and minuses. We lose on medical, we gain on prescription, so it's a net small decrease to us that we'll see. Obviously, the third look will be where it's really important because the second look's going to be changing either way. Fuel costs are really regular gas. We've locked in our diesel. I think I locked that in at $2.25, or no, $1.985. So we actually have a really good diesel price on that, so that's locked in. Staffing changes, any changes in staffing will affect payroll, will affect benefits, replacements, new hirings, additional staff, subtraction of staff, any special needs students that increases staff. Insurance, the quotes are due in April, so we'll be getting new insurance quotes. Our insurance for workman's comp did go down, so that'll be reflected in the next update, and whatever decisions are made with the debt financing will also be impacting the numbers. The decision timeline still has not changed. The next date for the Board to really make a decision will be on May 14, which will be to adopt the budget, and then June 18 to approve the final budget. The budget history has all the changes that we've been through. There's really no update on that information other than you can see the 313 from the Finance Committee, and then the next day, based on what the Finance Committee requested, the updates associated with that.
Thank you, Mr. Bricker. And we'll be posting this presentation up to the business manager's website, but for the Board members, are there any questions at this time? Anybody to my right? Mr. Ryan?
Thank you, Tim. First of all, thank you for the millage rate history slide. I think that's an important slide to keep in mind as we're going through this budgetary process here. Three questions I have for you. The collection rate, how are we trending so far in the current year? Do you see any fluctuation in the 96%? Or do you think that'll be the rate that we wind up using?
I think it'll be a little bit higher, but not much. It'll be right around there. It wasn't much change even from last year.
Okay. And in the past, we talked about the idea of the budgetary reserve. Is that still existing in the current budget that we have, the $200,000 sitting in the budgetary reserve?
Yes.
Did the Finance Committee discuss that at all? I'm just curious, you know, in the last couple of years, we've kind of tended to have some surpluses there. Do we think that there's any benefit to taking that $200,000 out for a year, see where we fall out? Generally, they're one-time expenses that would put us over the top anyway. We could kind of get into the -- I'm not sure what's going on there. We could get into the fund balance, which we have at about, I think it's like $7.6 million at this point. So was there any conversation around that?
We haven't really specifically addressed that one item. But we can.
We should. Yeah, I would just say--
Just for people, just for the record, we've had a lot of debate about that. Not this year, but Mr. Ryan's correct. So we'll have that conversation at the next Finance Committee meeting. Appropriate.
Thank you very much. And the other one that I had brought up in the past was, have we delved into the attritional savings conversation? I mean, we budget based off of current staff that we have now, assuming that that's the staff we'll have next year. We do budget for long-term subs and all that stuff, too. So it kind of seems that we're doing both, but we never take into account the people who leave throughout the year. You know, we hire them at the lower salary. There should be some kind of history there that we can kind of see to see, you know, what kind of attritional savings can we kind of bank on.
That's actually started with this one. Che and I have been working on that with regards to the savings. You'll see that the STS, the subs in his budget, actually decreased. That's part of that $60,000 decrease. And we're trying to analyze what positions are actually long-term subs that are filling vacant positions versus ones that go on leave, so we can try and refine that number with the long-term subs. And what will happen is we'll reduce the long-term sub expenses, and then if we need them, what we'll do is we'll move the money from the salaries down to that on a budget transfer.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, I would just suggest that, you know, keep looking at that. I think that's another area where we can be kind of aggressive. I'm pretty sure if we went back over the last couple of years to see how much attritional savings we had in a year, I'm sure that we could probably get a little bit more out of that. So, thank you.
Mr. Winters?
Again, thanks, Tim. I just really have one question, which is on 16, which is the additional staffing requests that are not in the budget, and just understanding what is the timeframe for the discussion around some of these? Because I looked at the bottom one, which was pupil services, PCA 5, which my understanding is incoming, a lot of incoming requirements. That is an obvious need, maybe not obvious, but a need. And the transition coordinator, the one right above it, are things that I already sort of decided that I think I need to support and don't know enough about the rest of them. But I don't know, when do we see that pulled into the budget as a line item?
So last month, last year, not last month, last year, that came in towards the end of April as Susan got her numbers, and we adjusted from there. So I'd assume roughly around the same time.
Certainly on the PCA, but I guess on the transition coordinator, we can have a discussion about, from a Board, to give a directional on that in the budget process, or does that come into finance or through education? Or does that come into finance or through education to finance?
I think a number of these positions are, you know, probably tied up in a greater staffing conversation that we need to have as a board. But with that said, you know, we can expect that we'll be bringing those matters that are education-related through the education committee and all those matters through the finance committee prior to hitting the board at a work session. Other comments? Mr. Navarrett?
Yeah, I'll second Mike's comment on budgetary reserve. I'd like to see us just come back to the next finance committee. Let's nix it and see what everything looks like. I'd also challenge us that in, with these budget surpluses that we've had, I think it's time, even with our borrowing, as we try to be smarter about it, that we start to start the process of making small incremental increases in the amount that we're putting into our capital reserve. So that, you know, tonight, we're going to talk about some capital projects that we're going to do off-budget, same year, not part of master plan work. That's the way we have the finances in there to do it. Just like with your personal finances, you start small with a little bit of amount and build it over time. I'll also second Mike's comment on the staffing, as far as how we look at what we budget for substitutes. And I made a comment in the work session, and Andrea shared the, with me, or copy of the presentation for the education committee meeting. Are we where that's concerned? There was significant discussion as a board last year about, I know Che, you weren't here, but there was significant discussion at that time about the plan as we put forward. We were going to come back and maybe revisit it this year, changing rates depending on results. Are we, are we not, are we going to say that we're happy with where we're at right now? And also, are we going to see a, I guess, at the end of the year, after this budget process is done, are we going to see a full post audit on that decision?
So at this moment in time, a lot of the limitations are based on the pool of candidates that we have. So one of the things I think that we're looking to do for some data at the end of the year would be the guest teacher program. We still have, one thing that we talked about in the committee meeting was that we had three individuals that had followed through with the process. We spoke to STS this morning, and they had 35 candidates that are out in other schools that are doing guest teacher. 12 of the 35 candidates are actually residents within our community. So we're going to open it up to 15 candidates, and we're looking to target April 9th, 10th, 11th timeframe for that meeting. So we're reaching out to our administrators, so they're aware of that. We just started to set that this morning. We're expecting, the reason I went into great detail with that is we're expecting that to produce results, hopefully more so than some of the financial commitments. So we had lost 65 subs, an important statistic, and gained 66 this year. So there's a lot of fluctuation in that number.
And I will just add to that real quick. I mean, you ask a very good question, but I mean, I was impressed that we started to be proactive and that we moved ahead. And I believe where I work is one of the only places that has a better fill rate and, like slightly, and slightly higher rate. And we, in my building alone, we were short two subs today. It's just a real issue across the county.
Yeah, I completely understand that. I just want to make sure that we're going to follow up at the end of the day and do a full post audit so that we look at STS and LTS, because those weren't broken out in that report. And then we also look at where the breakout is versus, you know, our, what's our expense differential versus last year in terms of what's just the higher rate and what's associated with the higher fill rate. So when we get to the summertime, after we've got all those stats for the year, that would be good to see.
Just to step in. Just to step in, the presentation that you did present, you know, presented, if we could put that in and share with everyone, because I think it will answer all the questions you're asking, because it went back and it gave an analysis from when we presented it with the ideas to what we have now. So I think it was an important part in our, if you want to share that presentation, it will answer all your questions, I think.
And then other budget items. We had talked about how we budget for tuition reimbursement. I'd like to see, when we come back to the next finance committee meeting, if you can give us the history of what's actually been requested over the last, say, three years versus what we've budgeted. And let's budget appropriately. If, you know, if there's a year where we end up going over by $20,000, I'm not averse to dipping into our sizable general fund to cover that or pull it from somewhere else in the budget, but let's budget smart. Reach expansion, I guess we're going to hear about the success of Reach maybe next month, Susan, you had alluded to. If there's any intention of expanding that program for next year, now's the time for us to get it into the budget. I know we talked about a pilot for a year or two. I forget whether it was one year or two. But if there's any intention of expanding that, let's make sure that we've got that covered. And the supplies line item for the budget, kind of the same thing as far as tuition reimbursement. We had talked about that being a significant excess as far as a surplus, I believe it was in the forecast, whether, how accurate that was, the last one I know, questions. But that was a point of concern this year and also last year. So it'd be good, I'd like to see what that looks like, maybe going back three years versus what we budgeted. And then understand where that difference is and why there's a difference there. Are we budgeting for things that we're not using? Are we putting spending freezes in place? Are we not allowing people to buy supplies? I just want to know what that answers, so that we can make a smart decision there. That's all.
Any other questions on my right? If not, on my left, any comments or questions for Mr. Bricker?
Hi, thank you for putting this together. I just have a question about your assumed interest rates on bank investments, given that we just learned in the bond presentation that the prime rate seems to be trending downward. Do you think that that will affect your assumptions on your bank investments?
It can right now. I mean, I don't think it's going to change much from where we are. I am watching it with the information that we get from Baselaf every month with regards to, and I've had conversations with them. I think right now where we are is fine. We're actually looking at banking institution and our banking relationships to see if we can get our deposits. So deposits are the one area that we have some ability to potentially increase, depending on how we work out with our banking relationships. But right now, the CD rates are at 2.35%. I see them staying flat for a while.
Any other questions? Mr. Renshaw?
Yeah, thanks, Tim. Could you just refresh my memory on Slide 17, the $200,000 increase in transportation costs? What drove that?
So part of the agreement with first student ended at the end of the five years. We're now in year six. Part of year six, their request and financing would be to change the rate up to $288 per route, per day.
Okay. And then at the last finance committee meeting, you presented a forecast for this current fiscal year. Any updates on that?
Yes, I've been working on getting all the entries in and updating everything, so I think we'll see a more refined one at the end of this month.
Okay. Talk tuition reimbursements. And then I guess if we could go back and take a look at what, as Ralph had said, what drove the surpluses last year and make sure we're not repeating ourselves there in the budget, like tuition, like Mr. Navarrett mentioned. And then with staffing that's not in the budget, you mentioned at the end of April, is there any way to accelerate that? I think we talked about that at the finance committee meeting to, it's going to be difficult to come through and add staff when we get beyond, you know, kind of the May presentation. It just makes it challenging to kind of see where the budget's going to land and the resulting change in the bill rate. So to the extent we can try to get that finalized, maybe knowing that we have other things in the budget that could offset any negatives, whether it's staffing or attrition impacts or something like that, just to get.
Certainly, you know, we're going to move as quickly as we can. I think there's a lot of decisions that are up in the air right now. We're working administratively, and we'll be certainly approaching the board with matters that are certainly confidential, executive session related, that we'll be sharing with the board for their consideration. So those matters will go as fast as we can pull people together, make those decisions, and then get those in the public discussion for your consideration. But we're certainly moving as fast as we can.
No, I understand that. I was referring to the positions on Slide 16, the staffing requests.
Again, I think all of them, I think all of them have, you know, while there are some there, there may be some others that we may want to bring forward. And it's going to be a matter of, you know, making the overall best decision for how to manage some of the needs that we have. I don't know, I can't just, I don't want to just piecemeal saying we're going to add these in, and then I have something that would be more substantial benefit to our students, and I can't get it in because I now have committed you to these other positions. So, I mean, it's just, it's a challenge. We'll work through that, but we'll certainly want to get it in, as you commented, as soon as possible, because it makes it much easier for us to reach a May proposed final budget in that manner. So I recognize the challenge. Any other comments to my left on the budget? If not, Mr. Bricker, thank you so much. You might as well remain there. We next have on the agenda Arrowhead Forward. But before I go further, I just want to make notice that we had on the agenda back on the 19th when we met, that on the 26th, we would have Dr. Amy Mangano, principal of our coal, upper, our coal intermediate school, join us to talk about some proposed scheduling changes. As that presentation was being developed, there were a number of matters that I felt were critical, that they actually came before the education committee first, as we normally would with those types of changes. So we pulled that off the agenda. We're going through the education committee, and if the education committee is, you know, in agreement, we'll move those matters forward for the board's consideration in April.
Really quick budget question, just a logistical one. I noticed it said June 18th for the final acceptance of it.
That's at the work session.
Okay, so we, but we're voting it on it on the 25th, right?
No.
Oh. Oh, good.
So the schedule is a little odd.
Okay.
So it's not our normal routine, but in order to meet a couple of other deadlines, specifically making sure that we get the notice out to our taxing authorities, that they can, you know, get the notices out in a proper amount of time. Typically, the board has found itself, you know, voting at the end of the month, which gets us one day or two days' notice to our townships, and they can't get the bills processed. So we put them in a bind and puts everybody in a bind for getting notices out. So what we did a while back was through the conversation with the finance committee is a justice. Okay?
Sorry, just as a point of clarification there, there will actually be a special board meeting before the work session, correct? It's not voted on during the work session, like we didn't fire here.
Correct. Any other budget questions? If not, I want to ask Mr. Bricker to share with us what we're considering, the Arrowhead Forward board discussion and considerations for the fund and debt analysis. Now, you may recall this, you may not, but back in November, we had a snapshot of this exact presentation in, it was Slide 43 of like 60-some slides. So it was a long evening. I know that there was a number of important elements to all that presentation, and this was just one of them. But this evening, Mr. Bricker has the presentation in greater detail. You have a handout in front of you. It reflects the charts that are being presented on the screen and that Mr. Bricker will refer to. So, Mr. Bricker, when you're referring to the charts, let us know, so we can flip back and forth to which chart.
Sure. I'm going to start with the debt service scenarios that were up there. Give you a little bit of background. First, the baseline scenario. I think it's important to everyone to understand what the baseline scenario is. This is the numbers that you'll see every time PFM's presenting. This is what it is right now. That includes the work to be done at Arrowhead to refurbish it, renovate it, whichever way you want to look at it, as well as the other projects at the other schools. What it does not include, because some people may think that while there's $95 million, there's only $85 million on this repair work, it does not include Farina, it does not include Audubon, it does not include the transportation center, and it does not include the maintenance facility. So that's one of the disconnects that when you look at the facilities assessment study, those items are not included in that. You'll see that if you come to the property committee, the presentation, the bottom line in gray, that's the stuff that's not being worked on. And that's not part of the plans with regards to the financing. Okay, so I think that's important to understand. I think Glenn also covered the fact that we do wraparound bonds, which means what we do is we structure our debt so that debt doesn't exceed a number that we come up with. Something we can always adjust up or down based on what the tolerance of the board is and where we want to go with the work that we're looking at. Scenario one that I have out there, that's with the district borrowing $11 million in additional funds in 2021 for new construction. That shows what would happen. If you look on the number chart that I provided you, page one of the sheet, you can actually see where that comes in on the borrowing on, for this into 2021, where the actual borrowing for 2021 would be $19.5 million. You see that the, on the debt service scenarios with the annual debt service that we're looking at, because we do the wraparound bonds, the numbers don't really increase. It does increase because you're backloading some of this debt, so as rates go up, and that's why the debt service is going up, because it's not so much that you're borrowing, the principal is changing, but the longer you put it, the higher your interest rates are going to be, which is going to increase your debt service. One of the things we said we wanted to stick around with right from the beginning was right around a $12 million number with regards to our debt service. Scenario number two takes a little bit more phased-in approach with regards to if we do new construction for Arrowhead, and that would be $4 million in 2022 and $4 million in 2021 also. And then in 2023, you'd have $3 million. That kind of spaces out what we would expect, the beginning stages of the construction, the middle, and the end. All along with all these scenarios, we're continuing to do work on the other buildings. How much work each gets done each year depends on what we can get with the contractors and what we feel we're capable of managing also on our side, because we have to have the oversight associated with it. You'll note on the annual debt service, which you can look at on your chart, and you can see up there, if you look at years 34, 35, you'll notice that currently, if we do no work at Arrowhead, that that goes down to, which, no work meaning new construction, not renovations, just to be clear, that goes down to about $107,000. If you do the renovation or new construction in scenario one or scenario two, your last payments on that debt would be 30, 34, 30, 35, which is around $12 million. Okay? And we're going to go to the next slide, which is the percent of the budget. So what I did, and you can see this on the number chart that you're provided with, you can see where we project the budget. We have the current 112, $666 million budget that we're looking there. I take the same numbers and the increases and apply them throughout the years and then project out where it be. It's not, it's not the greatest way of doing it, because you really have to focus in on different changes, the Act One and everything, but it uses the assumptions that we know today and then forecast out where the budget will be. So basically, by 34, 35, our budget could be up to $159 million. So when you look at the percentage of the budget that these debt payments or the debt service calls, you'll notice we're right around 9% roughly, and then right around the 2029, 2030 year, it starts to make small decreases, getting down to the 8%. So the nice feature of the wraparound budgets, which I'll go back to that debt service, it keeps the debt level for what we have to pay out of our school's budget and allows you to do it. Yes, it's longer, yes, you're paying more interest, but at the end of the day, it's a controllable expense that you can really forecast out and work with to set your future budgets. And again, it gives us the flexibility, if we want to go up the debt service of 13, 14, whatever it is, as times change and our decisions change, we have the ability to take on more principal payments on those years and adjust accordingly, which could shrink that. Obviously, we're making a conservative point of view right now and seeing where the debt would be based on our current assumptions.
Thank you, Mr. Bricker. Mr. Winters?
Yeah, to your first point about the other buildings, transportation facility in Farina, why are we doing that? Why are we excluding additional requirements around property in this evaluation?
Well, we have not, there are not any of the master plans currently in any of the forecasts that we're looking at now. It's not included currently in. forecasts that we're looking at now. It's not included currently in anything that we do. I think with regards to Farina, the decision was to hold off right now with regards to that. Transportation, there was considerations at the time whether or not transportation would be on property, off property, if we could find him another location. Not sure about the maintenance facility, but there are maintenance, hopefully they could fix that, but.
But I, I understand Audubon, and I can understand, I think the transportation and the Farina should be put in for the time being, if we find other solutions for those things. The, the three, the transportation, the Farina and the facility. It's hard, it seems like we're, we're not seeing the whole picture by pulling those out. That's just one man's opinion.
One thing I'll say about Farina is just, I know there's been no decisions made, but in my mind, I always thought we'd put it in a building that maybe had some space, like the high school, which would cost money, but I didn't know if that was as big. I do understand your point, Paul, but it was kind of like, you know, all of admin's very important, and your building is older, but that's kind of the way I looked at it.
Yeah, I think just with the Farina Center is, you know, we don't want to be putting money into an administrative building when we have such need in the, in the, in the school buildings where our students are. But, 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 and
I understand.
With the larger, with the larger concept, and I think you brought it up in a previous meeting, you know, what to do with, with the Farina Center, what to do with transportation. I think, you know, they're built into this. I don't know if we'd ever recommend, you know, rebuilding the Farina Center. I, I don't know whether we do that. And that, that, that troubling to say, but I don't know how I'd recommend, you know, putting $2 million to build a new building for the administrative team. So, so, you know, adding that into the scenario probably needs to be done maybe in a larger context, as we're talking about Arrowhead Forward and, and, you know, renovation and or construction with, with that particular building. So, and, and any of the other, you know, available space within the district. So, it's, it's part of our larger conversation that maybe our, our consultants, if, if hired this evening, could help us, you know, dig out and pull out as, as part of a, a larger plan.
I, I understand. I mean, I'm not, believe me, I'm not advocating for a new Farina, but I, I mean, there's repairs that need to be in there. They're not even included in, in the elements that we're looking, and we have a contractual requirement in the, with first student to provide the transportation building. So, I mean, we know that these costs are there, and there are going to be HVAC requirements or whatever is on the facilities study that we should be counting for.
Understood. Any other questions from, from my right, for Mr. Bricker? Mr. Ryan?
I don't have the, the Facilities Assessment Study in front of me here, but you mentioned for the baseline scenario, which it includes the cost to renovate Arrowhead. Are they included in the bucketed year? Like, I mean, I think it was something like $14 million was the last number for, you know, renovations to Arrowhead. You know, how is that, how are the $14 million kind of in this? Because if we decided to build, you know, say it's two years, three years down the road, or something like that, where you need a lot of money at one period of time, but you have eight and a half million borrowed and $3 million set aside for other projects, how do you get that, a mass of money?
So, we project taking eight and a half million dollars worth of borrowings each year, and what the Property Committee assigns that to, they could assign $5 million to Arrowhead that year, and $3 million somewhere else. They could sign the whole eight and a half million. So, the Property Committee assigns when we start those works based on all the recommendations from Facilities, from Fidavia, as to which projects we will then start. When administration obviously weighs in on their thoughts on which projects are most pressing, and then the Property Committee then selects, like they will be doing this year, with regards to what gets put into the bond and what we're going to work on in the summer.
So, so I think what he's trying to explain is that we would continue borrowing about the same amount on an annual basis, and we would be pushing out some of the projects that are listed in the, in the master plan schedule to coincide with the, the change in what would come first. So, if you needed to borrow an extra $11 million for a, a new building, that may actually push some of other projects out, say, an elementary building or a middle-level building.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think it's got to be part of the discussion. I think as we get closer to a discussion, decision point in October, I think that's probably the more appropriate time for us to figure out exactly what gets pushed back and, and when, because I think otherwise, you know, talking about it now, I mean, we can, I mean, we can have, you know, Dan and Mark push through a kind of a high-level look at, at what's there. But I think until we get to a decision point in October about, you know, how far into Arrowhead we're going to go, I don't know that it adds anything right now. It's got to be done, right? I mean, at some point, there's going to be projects that are going to be pushed back, because we are going to have to spend money at Arrowhead that we didn't spend in these first couple of years. So, it has to be part of the plan, but I think we take it up in the fall.
Yeah, I just think whichever route you go, if you choose the renovation route, we know that that's, you know, 14, 15 million dollars. That's eight and a half million in borrowing in a year. So, you're going to have to borrow the full amount pretty much both years in order to be able to do that, and that's the lower dollar value. So, if you had the new construction at, you know, 25 million, you're going to do three years' worth of eight and a half million. So, it's significantly going to push back every project in the other buildings. So, I didn't know, I know we're trying to keep the, the, the base around the same number, that $12 million, that 11 and a half to $12 million, but I'm just curious how that will happen with some of the projects that, you know, might be more important than the other buildings that need to be done during that timeframe. You know, can we, can we borrow more if needed type discussion?
Yeah, Mike, I don't think that, you know, if we end up at 14 or 25 or whatever the number is, that we're going to push off that equivalent dollar value worth of work and master plan work. I think there's going to be some give and take there. You know, it doesn't mean that we're necessarily going to only take eight and a half. I mean, we've been trending lower than that the last couple of years. You know, we've been more seven-ish. But I think there's going to be some give and take there. Maybe we do two or three towards master plan, you know, and then maybe there isn't eight and a half or 10 or 11, you know, some of these scenarios, like Tim did, and we just wrap around on the backend, you know, depending on what we need the money for Arrowhead. Because there's going to be things that are going to have to be done, right? There's going to be roofs, there's going to be HVAC. We know what our, we know what those situations are. Those things are going to have to be addressed.
Any other comments from Mr. Bricker, from my right? If not, left? Any comments? Mr. Earnshaw?
Thanks, Tim. Can you just tell me in the borrowing section for each line, how much is in there for Arrowhead?
I'd have to get that for you based on what the current situation is with the master plan and the projected expenditures.
Of the 68 million, so I would, I would like to know how much is in there for Arrowhead, and then how much of the 79 on the next two lines is?
I think it's 49 and 25. 14, I'm sorry, 14 and 20, 25.
14 and 25?
Yeah.
Okay. And then on the debt service, if you could check your numbers, like for example, when I look at the audit report back in Note F for the five-year maturity table or the maturity table, it's showing for 1920, 9.8 million, and you're showing 9.5. So, if you could just reconcile those two for me, I think that'd be helpful. And then the remaining debt numbers, what, is that principal and interest?
Yes.
Okay. Can you add a, a section that just shows the principal balances? Because I think what you'll see is the way we've structured the master plan borrowings by doing eight and a half million a year, it's replacing the principal that gets paid off every year. So, the total debt's kind of remained flat. Well, the debt service may totally increase, but the, the debt balance has remained relatively flat.
That's where the interest rates come in, the higher interest rates on the backend of long bonds. Yes, I'm agreeing with you.
Understood. But I, I would like to see what the district's debt, the principal balances are at the end of each year under the three scenarios. I think that would be, that would help me out. And also, if you just get the, the assumptions relating to the borrowings, when do they occur in the fiscal year? It looks like they're embedded at the tail end of the fiscal year, the way that your debt service increases.
I don't think we pick the dates to when it would occur.
Right, but it looks like it's in the backend, because for example, in 2021, under Scenario one, with the 19 and a half million borrowing, the debt service has not increased that much from year to year. You don't see the real jump until '21, '22. So, I'm assuming you've got it in the back half of the year. And then if you could also tell me what kind of the interest rate assumptions are?
Sure.
That in here, that, that'd be good as well. Okay, thanks.
Any other comments from Mr. Bricker? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bricker. We'll, just for the board information, we'll update the information as requested. We'll get this chart back out to the board members. And what we'll also do is, as we've been doing things related to Arrowhead Forward, we'll post this presentation and the adjusted presentation up for the public to, to see as well.
Thank you, Dr. Zerbi. With that, we will move on to reports, and we'll begin with the Finance Committee, Mr. Earnshaw.
Thank you. The Finance Committee met on March 13th. The meeting was called order at 6:30. All committee members were in attendance. As we usually do, Mr. Bricker reviewed the monthly financial reports, including the list of bills, a Treasury Report, budgetary transfers, and the expenditure of revenue, revenue reports for the month of February. He answered questions that the committee had, and the list of bills, Treasurer's Report, and budgetary transfers are on tonight's agenda for approval. Mr. Bricker also reviewed the Healthcare Consortium Report, provided an update on Consortium member status, which he also confirmed tonight. And he also reported on a change in the Consortium's prescription carrier. Regarding discussion topics, we talked about the purchase of a driver's education car to replace a vehicle that's, as of least expiring. That's on the agenda for tonight's meeting. Mr. Bricker also then reviewed the budget forecast for the 2018-19 fiscal year, and responded to questions. He gave us a budget update, very similar to what he presented tonight. We also discussed transfer of funds to the Capital Reserve, which is on the agenda for approval tonight, to designate certain funds from last year's budget surplus to be used to fund about $625,000 in capital projects. We reviewed the bond financing timeline, which was also presented tonight as well. We discussed a parent transportation contract, and Mr. Bricker answered questions to that. Then opened the floor, opened up to Courtesy of the Floor, and we heard from Joe Bickelman of Lower Providence, John Andrews of Lower Providence, and Jim Malick from Worcester. The comments, the top, the comments and topics they asked questions on or commented on are listed in the minutes, and the meeting adjourned at 8:22 PM. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Earnshaw. Property and Transportation Committee, Mr. Navaret.
The Property and Transportation Committee met on March the 11th. In attendance were all committee members, Dr. Zerbi, Mr. Bricker, Mr. Fretz, and Dr. Sisnovik, Mr. Sicala from Fidavia, Ms. DelGrosso, and Mr. Cook from E+ were also there as well. Dr. Sisnovik reviewed with the committee his proposal for updating the district's phone system. I won't go into the details on that. He discussed it at length in the work session last week. Regarding the master plan, Mr. Sicala presented the summary of the 2018 master plan work totaling $6.8 million. Mr. Bricker noted that we still have $400,000 in invoices that are outstanding. So, once we have a final summary of the 2018 expenses, we've asked that that gets pushed back out to the Board, so that we have a wrap-up. At Arcola, the auditorium, the punch list was presented to the Board. Now that the play is over at Arcola, those items are accelerating. Contractors were on site that day, and the pace of completion is expected to accelerate. Mrs. Sicala also reviewed the trains, the change orders that we had previously approved, including the $1,611.54 that the district saved by consolidating that work schedule. Mr. Fretz provided an update on the HVAC system at the pool. The unit is running at holding temperature. There is one outstanding item on it that we anticipate will be fixed with work on the unit ventilators in the coming year, excuse me, this summer. Under the 2019 capital projects, the committee reviewed the master plan timeline as usual. Mr. Bricker informed the committee that borrowing for the master plan would be taken up at Finance Committee, which we've already discussed tonight. Mr. Sicala reviewed the status of the consultant contracts and the bids that are out on the agenda for tonight, are the two roofing contracts for Arcola and the high school. There was also proposal for additional, additional consultant work for the D-rated roofs in the district. This was done, we talked about this last week, but this was being done to avoid any surprises like we saw at the high school this summer. They're doing, they're doing more aggressive inspections of the decks, sampling, and IR scans. Regarding the second phase of the high school master plan work, Mr. Fretz and Mr. Sicala briefly discussed the project, their progress toward a bid, bid package. That's expected to come back to the committee next month. Under transportation, Dr. Zerbi and Mr. Bricker noted that the proposed 96-day PennDOT project on Eagleville Road had been postponed to start on May 28th now. That had several advantages. One, the project occurs in the last two weeks of school instead of through the last two months of school, or three months of school. Two, several non-public schools will have already finished, which frees up seven to nine buses, which allows us to do some creative rerouting to minimize any disruptions. And then third, it avoids any interference with the start of school in the fall, which is a much worse scenario, obviously. So, Dr. Zerbi did note to the committee that our state representative, Joe Webster, was very helpful in coordinating discussions with Harrisburg to get that project delayed. Under donor advertisement, Dr. Zerbi presented the committee with an agreement for Vesta Insurance to sponsor the next video in the showcasing the Pride of Methactin video series on driver education. I believe that item is on the agenda for review tonight. Under Courtesy of the Floor, John Andrews of Lower Providence requested information on the bid opening for Arrowhead Design Services. Mr. Sicala informed that there would be no bid opening because of professional services contract. He commented on the district's special education enrollment and room usage, asked about completion of the Lock Court Transition Project, and stated his concerns with the path forward for Arrowhead, reading from a November 27 Times Herald letter to the editor. Jim Malick of Worcester questioned the potential cost avoidance if Arrowhead were to be closed, claimed that 10 classrooms would, could be added to Arcola for $2.6 million, claimed that Milona McBroom had incomplete information for their enrollment study update, and stated that he didn't receive a letter about the Arrowhead Forward meeting, and the committee adjourned at 7:51.
Thank you, Mr. Navaret. Education Committee, Ms. Reese.
We met on March 4th. All committee members were present. First on our agenda was Judy Schmitz with a review of the 339 Plan, the College and Career Readiness, which all of you saw at the work session last week, and the, the plan is up for approval this evening. The teachers on assignments, the teacher, we were given a teacher on assignment update. All three of the teachers attended the meeting. Dr. Katona gave an update on their work, identified areas of focus for next year, and the teachers answered questions. Next up was an extensive list of textbook recommendations that are up for approval to be reviewed this month, and then next month, depending on that, will be up for approval, for purchase. Next was the much anticipated substitute teacher update by Mr. Regina. He updated us on the current situation, including a slightly higher fill rate and beginning stages of the guest teacher program. There were 20 people who attended an information meeting, and the district would like to have at least 10 at a training. We were hoping for the end of March, but now it looks like it's in April, which is wonderful. We discussed this request for a study at Skyview, which is also on the agenda for approval. Dr. Engstead let us know about the special education audit, which occurred last week, which is a part of a mandatory PDE audit that occurs every six years. At Courtesy of the Floor, there was a very large group that attended, and we allowed them to speak early in the meeting. Kelly Ludwig came to express concern she had regarding her son who attends Skyview. Several other parents came to support Ms. Ludwig, specifically Tricia Reddy, Louis, I'm going to say your name wrong, Spizio, and Kristen Mascaro. At our regular Courtesy of the Floor, at the end, end of the meeting, Sandy Katz asked about the TOAs in special education, curriculum for special education, and mentioned Collections does not have an intervention component, which is, we responded, is actually being looked into at this very moment. Karen Lutz asked for a Hampton House update. For those unaware, it was a great program at the high school that was, the grant ran out, and we are looking into, we and other legislators, legislators are looking into how to get that back. Ramona de la Rosa was concerned about the lack of a transition coordinator and questioned the transition coordinator that was spoken about in January, and was on our budget this evening as a possibility. Jenny Geis would like more math support teachers, mentioned there was no open-ended questions for needs assessment, and would like a chance to respond with more information. Kit Markle, Mrs. the K-4 math teacher on assignment, concerned about wonders assessments, and also mentioned and also mentioned caseloads difficult for special education because some teach multiple grades. Jim Mullick commented that the committee treated the large group of parents with respect but feels taxpayers not treated with the same respect. He also thinks it's funny that Ms. Reese asked for a tour. The meeting adjourned at 9:30.
Thank you, Ms. Reese. Policy Committee, Ms. Hall.
The Policy Committee met on Wednesday, March 6th, in the Farina Boardroom. The meeting was called to order at 6:30 PM. In attendance were Ms. Aubrey Larsonis, Mr. Ryan, Mr. Winters, Dr. Zerby, Ms. Montane, and myself. From policies previously discussed, the committee recommended six of the 13 policies be brought forward for first reading. Please note the minutes of the meeting for policy numbers and titles. Policy 918, Title I, Parent and Family Engagement, had first discussion and was recommended for first reading. There were no policies on the schedule for five-year review. All eight policies on the schedule for two-year review were recommended for first reading. Please reference the meeting minutes for policy numbers and titles. There's no discussion of old or new business, and there was no input during courtesy of the floor. On a motion from Mr. Winters, the meeting adjourned at 8:36.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. The intermediate unit, Mr. Ryan.
Thank you. The MCIU board met on February 27th at the IU's Early Learning Academy. The evening started with tours of the building to give the board members a chance to see the condition of the building and to hear about some of the proposed work that the IU would like to plead on that building. The board should soon be presented with bids for the projected work, and I will notice that the IU is also utilizing the services of Fedivia. During the meeting, the IU board voted to approve the bargaining unit agreement between the IU and the IU's Education Association. The term of the agreement is from July 1st, 2019, through June 30th, 2022. The Education Association approved the agreement with a 94% of its members voting yes. The IU board in attendance voted unanimously to approve. Both parties believe that the agreement is both fair and reasonable. That even five initial budgets were approved. The two largest were the MCIU Student Services Budget, which represents the cost of providing special education services to Montgomery County School Districts, as well as the transportation budget. There were also many personnel items approved as usual, but I did want to note that the board unanimously voted to approve Sandra Edling as the new CFO, Director of Business Services. You may remember from last month, I noted the retirement of Stan Whistler at the end of the school year. Sandra has been the Assistant Director of Business Services for quite some time. Her employment agreement will be effective July 1st, 2019, through June 30th, 2023. Our next meeting will be tomorrow night. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. For the North Montgomery Technical Career Center, Ms. Reese.
We met on March 18th. First up was, there was over, just, excuse me, just under 800 people who attended the open house on February 14th, so they were very pleased with that. As always, they like to brag a little bit about their giraffes, who won first place at a robotics competition. There was a new, well, the police officer was sworn in. And of note, the Sodderton Education Committee, they sent seven of their teachers to the tech center for the day and had a really, really productive, wonderful day there, and I'm pleased to announce that Methacton is next. And we have a variety of teachers going, so that's going to be awesome. It's really hard to talk about it with students and encourage students unless you have a real hands-on firsthand knowledge of the building and of the teachers and of the programs. We did approve the budget, and I have a copy for anyone who would like it. The biggest part of the, the biggest discussion of the topic is they are sticking within Act I, and the biggest expense, a little bit of money from the fund balance and from adult ed, is a need to renovate the warehouse. And so that was, like I said, the biggest expense and change in the budget. And on a lighter note, there is breakfast with Bunny on Saturday, April 6th. So, if anyone's interested, you can go on their website to learn about it. I've gone before. It's good breakfast and good pictures.
Thank you, Ms. Reese. And our student board representatives, Lauren and Caleb.
Mini-Thon took place last Friday. Students did not sit for eight hours and instead danced and participated in many activities to benefit the Four Diamonds Fund. $78,221.81 was raised to benefit conquering childhood cancer. And the end of the third marking period is coming up. April 1st marks the beginning of the fourth marking period. Thank you.
The spring sports season is now underway at Methacton. Spring sports this year include lacrosse, baseball, softball, track and field, and tennis. And lastly, Methacton had a few competitors at the Oral Proficiency Contest, which was held by the Montgomery County Teachers of Foreign Language. The event took place at Plymouth White Marsh High School. It was open to students from private and public middle and high schools within Montgomery County. The event featured individual interviews in Chinese, French, German, Japanese, or Spanish.
Thank you. For the Methacton Education Foundation, we do not have Ms. Karlovic or Mr. Bean here this evening. They had a conflict, but as the liaison with the Education Foundation, I have a brief report to share. The foundation is pleased to award the following grants this month. $4,560 for Woodlands STEM Aquarium, $3,200 for college tours for economically disadvantaged students, $3,500 for the Electric Car Club, $2,000 for the Robotics Club, and $11,010 for the Arcola Philanthropy Club. The Arcola Philanthropy Club was born out of an annual grant from the Phoenixville Community Health Foundation. Among other things, the PCHF provides funding and infrastructure to middle schools around the area to create extracurricular philanthropy clubs led by eighth graders. Arcola was selected for this program and has been running a club for several years. The students are responsible for choosing a cause to support, establishing a budget, creating a plan, and executing the plan. And the Education Foundation would like to thank the entire school board, Dr. Zerby and administration, for their continued support. I know that historically, we've had check presentations happening at the board meetings, but there's been a little bit more of a move with the foundation to involve the students who are benefiting from the funds in their presentations, and they've been going out into the schools and into our community a little bit more. So while we do miss seeing them here, it's great that the students who are benefiting from these programs get to really be part of the experience of the donation and the presentation of the checks. So that's it for the Education Foundation. And for Communications, Ms. Kelly.
Good evening. There are a few items I would like to share from the Communications Department tonight. The district has launched an effort to seek feedback from Methacton parents and students about food service in our schools. Yesterday, we sent out a voluntary online survey to those two groups, asking for their input. The goal of this process is to identify and define specific matters regarding the school-provided breakfast and lunch services that are in need of improvement. The anonymous parent survey runs through March 31st. Students have a little bit more time to submit their anonymous responses. Their survey runs through April 5th. The March edition of the district's video series showcasing the Pride of Methacton is ready to be published pending your approval this evening. This latest project gets behind the wheel of Methacton's driver ed program. Filming for next month's feature is well underway. We will be exploring Methacton's science program. One recurring theme that I've heard from students of all grades and all abilities is that they really enjoy the lab opportunities in the classroom. You'll get to see some of their exciting work when we premiere the April feature next month. You can check out this series anytime by going to www.methacton.org/showcase. And finally, Methacton families are reminded that school will be in session for all students, kindergarten through 12th grade, on Friday, March 29th. The approved 2018-2019 school calendar designated March 29th as a school holiday or a snow makeup day. That date is now a regular school day due to the snow date on February 12th. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. And for the superintendent's report, Dr. Zerby.
Thank you. On the agenda, there are just items for mention. Dr. Kokonour should be returning to the Assistant Principal role at Methacton, and I just want to let the board know that she did a fantastic job at Eagleville during the absence of Principal Reddish. And we are, you know, we're pleased with the level of effort and the enthusiasm and experience that she gained personally, being at a different level than she's normally used to. So, it was a win-win for everyone, so I just want to make the board aware of that. And lastly, and certainly of great importance, is at our next work session on April 16th, we'll be recognizing upwards in the neighborhood of 40, no, what is it, 25, about 25 individuals who were leaders of the post-prom committees from the very beginning, 20 years ago, to the current group that leads this. And we have special opportunity to recognize these individuals, as well as many others, through a slideshow, as well as, you know, a presentation and something that we'd like to share with the board as well. So, I think a trip in the history of such an important endeavor that had started to protect our children on one of the most challenging nights of a high school senior. So, I look forward to that on the 16th, and that ends my comments.
Thank you, Dr. Zerby. Before we get to public comment on board action items, I just wanted to announce that we do have one addition to the agenda this evening. Out of our executive session that we had prior to this meeting, we are adding item 13D2, which is a motion to approve the settlement agreement and release for student number 230161. So at this time, if there are any public comments on board action items, you can approach the podium. Just, if you could, please just let us know what action item you're speaking of so that we can hopefully be able to address your concerns when we get to that item in the agenda. Mr. Andrews?
Good evening. John Andrews. Several items. The Education Committee minutes, it says something along the lines of "Parents spoke about concerns regarding her son at Skyview." Seems to me that might be a cover-up of allegations of bullying in November. And furthermore, no follow-up actions are identified.
Mr. Andrews, that's not a voting item for this evening.
I'm sorry?
That's not an item that we're voting on this evening.
You vote on the Education Committee meeting minutes?
We do not. We vote on the board minutes, not the committee minutes.
Excuse me. All right. But with regard to the Design Services item on the agenda, today I again say delay that award until after you have, after you are comfortable about Methacton's finances and there is clarity and transparency of them. For instance, in Mr. Bricker's comments this evening, he presented a scenario in which the building costs would be bonded over a three-year period. And typically, for a building of that size, the construction period would be one year. So, I'm not sure you're going to get contractors that will want to take payment two years after they've finished the work. So, I think there's some more work that needs to be done. For instance, how would you finance full-day kindergarten? And there are the issues of, there's several other noneducational buildings where the, it appears, the renovation work, the maintenance work is being deferred for a decade, and that's rather problematic in my book. The other thing is, so, the interest rate assumptions over the 10 years for any new bonding, they need to be identified. We're not going to go on forever with 2% interest rates. And when we borrowed the money for Skyview, it was, I think, 6.5%. So, you can have some nasty surprises there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. Are there any other comments on board action items for this evening? Dr. Mollick.
Jim Mollick, Worcester. The bills. I got one here from Sweet Stevens Cats. Right-to-know November/December legal fees, $85.71. Is that right? Is that a correct number?
I don't think there's any reason to question it. If it's been paid, it's on there.
Yeah. Well, $8,500 for a right-to-know, what's that about? Can you explain that?
We'll address that at the appropriate time.
What do you got? Well, you can't help me out? Can't tell me what it's for? What, did you have 20 right-to-know requests come in that month? Or you're not going to be transparent? Because I know Mr. Navarette's big on transparency. Maybe you want to be transparent?
Dr. Mollick, you know it's not board policy or practice to engage in a back-and-forth like this, so I will make sure that we address it with the appropriate in the agenda.
Well, you're back-and-forth with a mother who has a disabled kid who has a problem. You're back-and-forth with people in the district who come forward, like Arrowhead parents, but you're not back-and-forth with the taxpayer. So what's that about?
Dr. Mollick, are your comments on a board action item?
Yeah. I'm back and, I'm just pointing out a discrepancy about the way you treat taxpayers versus the way you treat other people in the district.
Is this on a board action item?
It's on your behavior.
This is not a board action item?
It's on your behavior. A discrepancy on the way you treat people in the district. So, you're not transparent on the way you treat people in the district. DeShal Bordle duly. Shenondale litigation, October to January, $3,900. But, it says Athletic Facilities Bond Litigation right next to it. There's discrepancy. Can you explain that? Which one is it? Is it Shenondale litigation, or is it Athletic Facility Bond Litigation? Which one is it? Can you tell me?
We'll address that at the appropriate time.
You can't answer a question? Can't explain it? You can go back-and-forth with, you know, a mother having a problem, or Arrowhead parents who have questions and concerns, because I have those on tape. But you can't answer a taxpayer's question? So you're treating me differently than everybody else? You know what happens when you use the color of state law against one individual? You know what that is? Maybe ask your solicitor what that is. That's a violation of someone's civil rights. It's already been done. He'll tell you what that is. That's a problem for you. With regards to your 9E, $8,500? Is that a specific, you're going to have specific items for that $8,500? That you're going to use, that you're going to float that bond? Right now, there's no items associated with it. You going to come up with items for that, floating of that bond?
I've made note of your question. You can continue.
So, no answers?
Dr. Malick, your time's up. Is there anyone else with public comment on board action items this evening? Okay, seeing none, we'll carry on. May I have a motion to approve the board meeting minutes attached for the work session held on February 19th, 2019, and the regular board meeting held February 26th, 2019? Mr. Navarrette, is there a second? Mr. Earnshaw, any comments from the board? Seeing none. All those in favor? Motion carries. Fiscal items. Mr. Bricker?
Thank you. Tonight for your approval, we have the listed bills, Treasurers Report, Budgetary Transfers, the Bond Reimbursement Resolution of approximately $2.4 million, the Master Plan Bond for Seed Resolution, as presented by PFM tonight, transfer of committed funds, District Telephone Replacement System at a total of $486,573, approval of Arrowhead Design Professional at a cost of $8,750, an individual transportation contract, the purchase of a driver's education car to replace the 2016 Ford Focus that is at the end of its lease, the Summer 2019 Master Plan Projects, two of them, and the appraisal services by James K. Telen of Telen Short and Hassan not to exceed $15,000.
Thank you, Mr. Bricker. May I have a motion to approve the fiscal items A through Z, A through C, I'm sorry, as presented here this evening? Mr. Earnshaw, is there a second? Mr. Winters? As for comments, I'll start right off with the bill for right-to-know requests with Sweet Stevens Cats for, I'm sorry, I didn't note the months, but that approximately how many right-to-know requests came in in that time period? Do we have a ballpark idea?
I do not.
That's fine. I wouldn't expect you to know that.
It would be a two-month, we rebuild by the hour. It's not by the right-to-know request.
Okay. Okay. That's fine. I wouldn't expect that you would know that off the top of your head. And then the item for DeShale Bartle and Dooley, where there's some confusion as to whether or not it was for Shenondale or Athletics. Can we clarify that?
It's a invoice that covers both of those items.
Okay, so the firm combined both on one invoice, and so we paid it and noted accordingly?
No, they have separate invoices that we combined in one payment.
Okay.
And if I may, Madam President, I do believe the same would be true for the Sweet Stevens invoices, that those invoices are, include right-to-know as well as other solicitor legal fees. So that total is not just for right-to-know requests.
Thank you for the clarification, Mr. Sommers. And then for item, item 9E, the master plan, I mean, the items that are being paid for, for this bond are items that have been discussed at great length in the Property Committee, correct?
That's correct. There's a list of them. They total roughly $6.8 million, as discussed tonight by Mr. Navarrette. They outline all the different costs. One of the reasons why the bond is flexible right now is due to the fact that it could increase or decrease depending on the decisions of the Property Committee and the board as to which items they choose to proceed with.
And this is not the first year that we are passing a bond in order to finance master plan work, is it?
We're not passing a bond. We're only passing a bond resolution to proceed with getting a bond. We still have to, we pass the bond.
Thank you for that clarification. Is this process similar to the process that we have followed in previous years?
Yes, it is.
Thank you, Mr. Bricker. Does anyone else have any questions or comments on these three items? All right, seeing none. All those in favor? Okay, the motion carries nine zero. May I have a motion to approve Resolution Number 19-04 for the intent to reimburse the school district's capital reserve fund and/or committed fund balance from a portion of the proceeds of bonds to be issued for approximately $2.4 million of capital projects identified in the school district masters, school district's master plan as presented. Ms. Reese, is there a second? Mr. Earnshaw, any comments from the board? All those in favor? Motion carries nine zero. Next, may I have a motion to approve Resolution 19-03 as presented, authorizing the school district's financing team to proceed with preparing borrowing documents for review by the board at its workshop meeting on April 16th, and for advertisement and final consideration by the board on April 23rd, funding the 2019-2020 fiscal year portion of the school district's master plan? Mr. Winters, and a second, Ms. Hull, are there any comments? Seeing none. All those in favor? The motion carries nine zero. May I have a motion to approve the transfer of $625,192.53 from the committed fund for the master plan projects to the capital reserve fund for the use on listed capital reserve Ms. Reese, and a second, Ms. Drummond, are there any comments from the board? Mr. Navarrette?
Yeah, I raised questions about this last week, because there's some confusion based on the list that was there, as we only listed $250,000 for the phone system. What I propose is that we amend this motion to total, and I have it next to me, so that we include the entire amount of the phone system in this transfer, so that it's easily understood and transparent as to where the funding for this is coming from, and that we preserve a little bit that's in our capital reserve now. So I would move to amend this motion, the dollar amount of this motion, from $625,192.53 to total $861,765.53. That would include the entire amount for the phone system of $496,573.
Okay, is there a second? Mr. Winters, okay. So any comments on the amended motion? Mr. Earnshaw?
I mean, I guess I'd prefer, because we've, we've done some, and I've done some math on, on the numbers as far as, and some thoughts about where that surplus from the last two fiscal years is going to be used, and I was comfortable with the 625. So my purpose would be to leave it at the 625 number.
I guess my thought on this is that we have, we're going to pull this from the same, similar buckets of money, right? Whether we're pulling the difference here is a matter of $200,000 versus, excuse me, $250,000 nearly, that we're keeping the capital reserve versus using to pay for these projects. So my, my suggestion then is that we just take the full amount from the committed fund balance, which is, that is what we all voted to do before, was to use that towards capital projects, specifically these one-time events. And we put the entire amount towards that, rather than trying to piecemeal it out of different accounts.
Right. And I understand, and we, when we approved that transfer of those funds to committed fund balance, was when we thought the budget surplus from the last fiscal years will be half a million dollars. It wound up being two million plus.
Okay, at this point, then I will ask for a vote on the amended motion?
A vote on the motion to amend.
I'm sorry, a vote on the motion to amend. So do we have a vote on the motion to amend? All those in favor? Sorry, Mr. Navarrette. All those opposed? Okay, the motion does not carry. So now we'll return to the motion as presented with the dollar amount of $625,192.53. So we have a motion and a second for that item. Is there any further discussion on that item? Seeing none. All those in favor? The motion carries nine zero. The district telephone system. May I have a motion to authorize the administration to engage E Plus Technology Incorporated of Pottstown, Pennsylvania, a CoStarz-approved vendor, to procure and install a district-wide Cisco Unified Communication Solution in the amount of $486,573? Mr. Ryan, and a second. Ms. Drummond, any comments from the board?
Just real quick, I know, thank you, Dr. Sisnovik. I know this has been on your list and needs to be done. You know, I hate to spend the money, but I know it needs to be done. So, thank you.
Any other comments? Seeing none. All those in favor? And this motion carries as well. Can I have a motion to approve the firm of KCBA Architects of Hatfield, Pennsylvania, to provide professional feasibility phase design services in connection with the Arrowhead Elementary School in the amount of $8,750, pending review of the contract by the solicitor? Ms. Hull, and a second, Mr. Navarrette, are there any comments from the board? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed. Okay, the motion carries eight to one with Mr. Earnshaw opposed. May I have a motion to approve the parent contract number 2018-1 for transportation at the approved district millage reimbursement rate of 53 cents per mile? Mr. Ryan, and a second. Ms. Reese, comments from the board? Seeing none. All those in favor? Motion carries. May I have a motion to approve the purchase of a 2018 Ford Focus at the cost of $16,797.15? The purchase of this vehicle is to coincide with the return of the 2016 Ford Focus at the conclusion of the lease. Ms. Reese, and a second. Ms. Cancro, any comments from the board? Seeing none. All those in favor? Motion carries. Summer 2019 Master Plan Projects. May I have a motion to approve items 1 and 2 as presented under the Summer 2019 Master Plan Projects? Mr. Winters, is there a second? Ms. Reese, any comments from the board? Seeing none. All those in favor? The motion carries. And may I have a motion to authorize James K. Tellatin MAI of Tellatin Short and Hassan Incorporated to conduct appraisal services for the 2018-2019 tax years for the Shenondale property associated with the Shenondale assessment litigation, which is docketed in the Montgomery County Court of Common Pleas, at Consolidated Docket MCCP 2006-31345. Such services, services shall not exceed $15,000 without further board review and approval. Mr. Navarrette, and a second, Ms. Hull, any comments from the board? Mr. Ryan?
Just a question, I guess, to our solicitor here. Can we give any kind of detail around this? I know we generally don't make comments around existing litigation out there, but can we give the public any information on why this, why this action's needed?
I mean, in general, I think your sense is correct, and I would advise not to comment on any specific aspects of litigation.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Seeing none. All those in favor? The motion carries nine zero. And now moving on to personnel items. Mr. Regina?
Thank you. We have a number of items for the board's consideration this evening. The first is one classified resignation. We have an item for one classified employment. One item for professional change of status. We have two items for classified change of status. Three items for professional uncompensated leave. Two items for classified uncompensated leave. Six supplemental contracts. Four classified substitutes. And one item for the volunteer
Would anyone like to take any of the personnel items separately? Mr. Earnshaw?
Items D and F.
Are there any others that people would like to take separately? Okay, so then can I have a motion to approve personnel items A through N, excepting D and F? Ms. Reese, and a second. Mr. Earnshaw, any comments on items A through N, minus D and F? Mr., somebody's got to go first. Mr. Ryan?
Not a specific question to any one of the items here, but in a general comment, for like an uncompensated leave that we have here, we have three of them where we have a staff person who's going out on leave, we're going to bring in a long-term substitute. Can we utilize these types of instances to put dollar amounts that can kind of roll up to that attrition kind of factor that I was talking about for budgetary reasons? Obviously not on the agenda, but can we, like, use this as a tracking tool for that moving forward?
Yeah, I think we can. Sometimes with the support stack, it might be a little bit more complicated than it is with the teaching staff. But yeah, we can certainly.
Even just do some ballpark. I know you're not going to be able to do it exactly.
Yeah, we could look at that, sure.
Thank you.
I also had a question about uncompensated leaves. And I would imagine some are when, like, FMLA or, or sick days run out or something. What is another reason for uncompensated leave?
Typically, it could be for a, a trip. We might get it for like a graduation for a person asking to go to a college graduation that they wouldn't be able to go to. It's typically trips.
Even one that's six weeks or five weeks, even though there's vacation days in there?
It's like you said, some of them are medical as well, so that specifically could be a medical, and then this one is in that case.
Any other comments on these items? Mr. Winters?
My usual question, Shay, number one. B, I believe that individual went for another district for a full-time position. Is that correct?
That is correct. It's a better opportunity for that individual. Thank you, Paul.
All right, anyone else? All right, then I will take a vote on approval of items A through N, excepting D and F. All those in favor? The motion carries nine zero. May I have a motion to approve Personnel Item 10D? Mr. Winters, and a second. Ms. Reese, comments? Mr. Earnshaw?
Yes, could you explain what this position is and how the rate was determined?
Yeah, the rate is actually determined in the contract. So a game worker, depending on what they're actually working, will depend on what we pay that game worker. So it's, I notice it's an hourly rate. It's actually more of the, the rate in which that game worker would be paid for that specific event. So for instance, if they are a clockkeeper, they might get paid a certain amount of money. If they keep the book in a basketball game, they might get paid a certain amount of money. But they could work a range of events as a game worker.
But the, this rate is in fact hourly?
No, it's broken down by event. So that, that's not a, not an accurate word. Hourly is not accurate.
Okay, so generally, what's the length of time this individual's working at an event? Two hours, three hours?
Depending on the event, sure. I would suggest probably two or three hours, but it just depends. If it's a track meet, if it's a football game, it could change.
Because my concern came about when you annualize at hourly rate, and that hourly rate, it gets up there.
Yes.
Since we're talking about this position, I mean, I would imagine there's a lot of game workers. So like, for example, a track meet requires a lot of people to help. So, you know.
Yeah, and you typically do the game workers all in, in one shot. This individual had come forward, now it's just an addition. And before we use them as a game worker, of course, we want them approved by the board. We require all the necessary paperwork, so we, we put that forward.
It was, there's some sort of an event or an occurrence that caused this to be added? Because I know this was not on the agenda last week, so I just was wondering kind of what happened that it's appearing now.
Yes, this specific individual's working with the Athletics Office, getting their paperwork taken care of, and we got all that in as a spring sports approach, especially with track. Track is very difficult to find game workers. So if we can add to that list before the track season gets here, we, this is an attempt to do so. Thank you.
Can I make a motion to amend the wording of this item D, so that it says game rate versus hourly rate?
Is there a second? Mr. Ryan, okay. Any further comments on the amending of the motion?
So I, oh, not on the.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Navarette.
Che, would game rate instead of hourly rate in that slot be an accurate description, given the numbers that are there?
If I would make a recommendation on the word, I would probably say event rate. Just sometimes it's difficult, a track isn't a game, it would be an event. I know it's semantics, but event might be.
But the numbers are accurate, then?
Yes, yeah.
I withdraw my motion. And suggest we amend this to say event rate.
And do we have a second to that amended amendment? Mr. Ryan. Okay, any other comments on the amended motion?
Yes, I have another question. Sorry, I did put you on the spot for all this. So, I know track meets require a lot of people, so where I work, there's a huge email that goes out that says, "We need this many, we need this kind of worker, this kind of worker on this day," and then another email goes out, "Okay, we have four more spots." So, this is just someone outside the district because we need, because we can't fill it?
This was an individual that was specifically working with the athletics office in a different function, and after that had taken place, the individual suggested that they could work as a game worker, but didn't have any other employment paperwork at that time, then submitted the employment paperwork so we could get them on the agenda, so it was, I would say it wasn't done in the natural progression that we would typically do with game workers, but we had chose to add this person at this time.
And that's fine, I just, I guess it just put red flags, just because it is hard to fill, that's why we got two or three emails about it at my school, but our, so we don't have enough staff that wants to do it, so it would be helpful to have this person, is the bottom line?
Yes, yes.
Okay, all right.
Okay, are there any other comments, then? All right, so, Mr. Summers, help me out here. We're voting on the amended motion?
You're voting to amend the motion.
We're voting to amend the motion to be per event rate.
Correct.
So, all those in favor of amending? That motion carries nine zero. So now we have.
The motion as amended.
The motion as amended. All those in favor. The motion carries. Thanks for keeping it interesting, guys. Apologies to Mary Mandia when she has to take these minutes. Okay, can I get a motion to approve personnel item 10F? Ms. Reese, can I get a second? Ms. Drummond, any comments? Mr. Earnshaw?
Just a question, could you, I guess, maybe refresh my memory on why this is, this extension is needed? And I remember correctly from last week, the cost is about $22,000?
That's correct, the cost is $22,000. There were, what had happened, we had counselors that had been with our students since October, and the, one of the thoughts is, of course, is keeping those counselors on board with those students until the end of the year to fulfill some of those needs. Ms. Oliski, keeping her in the dean of students role, there are a number of projects that we've been incorporating in both the career planning and the guidance office that we'd be able to utilize her services for up to the end of the year, keeping those counselors in the positions to continue with those students, and still using Dr. Kokenauer when we would be able to need her at Eagleville.
Any other comments on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor. The motion carries nine zero. Moving on to curriculum and programs, I see Dr. Katona is not here this evening, so Dr. Zerby.
For your approval this evening, there is a doctoral study permission to approve a doctoral nursing research study by Rosaline Yuka of Audubon entitled "The Behavioral Focus Assessment of Hand Hygiene Practice and Associated Factors Among Elementary Students." This is conducted at Skyview Elementary Student. It is under the auspices of Westchester University and approved by their IRB for inclusion of students. There are a number of textbooks not for your approval this evening, but for, to be placed on public view. And then there is the item C under 11 for comprehensive school counseling, Act 339 plan as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Zerby. Just as a point of clarification, do we have to vote to put the textbooks on review? Is that correct?
Yeah, the textbooks will be on review, we'll be placing a notice on the district website, we will be placing the textbooks at the Farina Administration Building, and they're available for review by people to come in.
Okay. All right, then, may I have a motion to approve items A through C under curriculum and programs as listed? Ms. Reese, and a second, Ms. Drummond. Any comments from the board? Mr. Winters?
Just for clarification, Dr. Zerby, item one is no cost to the district?
That's correct, but we believe that we'll be getting some valuable feedback and information from it.
Any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor. Motion carries nine zero. Moving on to policy, we have 15 policies for first reading this evening. And then for second reading and approval this evening, we have six policies. So may I have a motion to approve the second read policies as presented here? Ms. Hall, and a second. Mr. Navarette, any comments from the board? Mr. Navarette?
Yeah, just one question on 913, maybe, Mary, just a clarification. So there's a statement within 913 that says, "The board prohibits distribution and posting of non-school materials by any non-school organizations, groups, or individuals." Am I reading that correctly, that it means that only district people are allowed to distribute materials for non-school organizations, or are we prohibiting any distribution of non-school materials? Things like scouts, or sports, or anything like that?
We do not directly distribute literature from non-school organizations. We do provide an electronic bulletin board on the district website to post those items if requested.
Any other comments on policy?
Can I just comment on that? Can you clarify, I think students are permitted to distribute? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm confused, this is not for school-related materials, they are.
Students can distribute.
Okay. Never mind. Sometimes all these policies start to run together. Any other comments on these six policies? Seeing none, all those in favor. The motion carries nine zero. Moving on to other, we have a number of gifts, donations, and sponsorships here. We have nine very generous gifts listed. We have two trips. We have the all-important date for commencement exercises. And yes, we have two settlement agreements, so I'm going to take a motion to approve the gifts, donations, sponsorships, and trips as listed. Ms. Reese, and a second, Ms. Cancro. Any comments from the board? All those in favor? Motion carries nine zero. May I have a motion to approve the commencement date of Thursday, June 13, 2019, at 4:00 PM for the Mathacton High School class of 2019? Ms. Reese, and a second, Ms. Drummond. Any comments from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor. Motion carries. Now, I need a motion to approve the settlement agreement with Applied Landscape Technologies Incorporated as prepared by legal counsel for this matter, to Shell Bartle and Dooley PC. Sorry, Mr. Winters, and a second, Mr. Navarette. Any comments from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor. The motion carries, sorry. We've got eight, all opposed. One, let the record show, Mr. Ryan is opposed. So the motion carries eight to one. And then, can I have a motion to approve the settlement agreement and release for student number 230161? Ms. Drummond, and a second, Mr. Winters. Any comments from the board?
I just wanted to let you know I'm abstaining because I was unable to attend the exact session.
All right, any other comments? All those in favor? Opposed. And abstaining, we have one. So the motion carries eight to zero. Dates for board members' calendars, we have our usual slate of meetings coming up in April. Any old business this evening?
Just since I brought it up last time, I would like to thank the board for their hard work on the post-prom, especially Mr. Winters. We got a lot of work done, and my panic has lessened greatly, so thank you very much. And to all the workers for post-prom, they've even extended the hours of the closet, and the, I have thank you to the district for allowing that, and I think it's 30, 31 days? 30 days? We're on the countdown.
Anything else for old business?
I have old business.
Okay, Ms. Drummond.
I just want to share that on March 7, Mrs. Hall and I went to Upper Dublin High School and attended the PSBA regional meeting. There was a presentation by Apple on "Everyone Can Code Curriculum" and "Everyone Can Create Curriculum." There was also a presentation on behavioral health as it relates to school safety and security that discussed mental health needs of students, youth suicide, multi-tiered levels of support that students can receive, and the student assistance programs in schools. There was also a presentation on the Safe to Say program that was implemented on January 14, and as of the date we attended, as of March 7, there were 11,430 tips received by that hotline, and of those 1,700 were life safety tips or interventions that were necessary. And Mr. Verab presented information about the implementation of the system and provided a lot of valuable information to those attending. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Drummond and Ms. Hall, for attending. Anything else for old business? Anything for new business? All right, at this point, we will open it up to courtesy of the floor. Dr. Malik.
Jim Malik, Warsester. How much was the settlement that Bartle did with Applied Landscaping? How much was the settlement amount? Do we know? Do you know how much?
On the advice of counsel, I'm not going to disclose that.
But you voted on it, and we could have given public comment, but you're not going to tell us how much you settled for? You want me to go dig it up? Is that what he wants me to do, is dig it up? You're not going to tell us? So much for transparency? Or is it sealed? I don't think it's sealed. You guys aren't transparent. What I handed you there is an email from December 3. And, and actually, this is an email to all of you guys from December 21, about an email from December 3 that talked about your building utilization studies that I've never been able to get from the answer on. So it turns out that there was a request to measure each room and how often each room is used, and what the use was. You guys did ask for that stuff. And it looks like Dr. Zerby provided a Skyview and Arcola actual current use by building. Well, I did get that information, and I handed it to you guys at the education meeting and at the property meeting, and it was, it showed there were 133 open classrooms at Arcola and 50 open classrooms at Skyview. Okay, that's what I handed you. All right? That was your utilization study, because it came along with this. I told you I had the information. I told you I had it. So, I knew what you had when I told you. So all this, "Well, we had all the information," you never gave me a straight answer. I told you I had the information. Here it is, right here. Now, Mr. Navarette talked about the budget surplus and how it's so much like how we budget our stuff at home. No. We don't, we don't take our extra money at home and pay down our mortgage. That's number one. We don't do that. Okay? Maybe we buy stocks, maybe we buy bonds, maybe we put it in the checking account, but I don't know, anybody double pays their mortgage. Okay? Maybe you guys do, we don't. All right? And, you know, a lot of us think we're overtaxed, because that's what you guys are doing, is overtaxing us. So I would quit the overtaxation. Now, the other thing I found out with relation to this is I got the actual documents from Dr. Zerby on how he came up with utilization. But it's under capacity, not utilization. And these are snapshots of how he came up with his findings. But he didn't use any of the stuff he gave you. He used functional capacity and enrollment. I could have done it, okay? He didn't use any of the stuff he gave you, nor could he. So everything he used for utilization was based on enrollment, projected enrollment, and functional capacity. So none of it can be used, it's not accurate. So, you guys can't move forward with this stuff. It's not accurate.
Thank you, Dr. Malik. Anyone else for courtesy of the floor? Mr. Andrews.
Good evening again, Johnny Andrews. One item on the agenda for this evening, the appraisal service, is the last item in number nine. The Shenondale property assessment dispute has been going on for a long time, a long, long time. And I've been paying modest attention to it for only maybe a decade. So, I think what were, what you voted on this evening was at least appraisal number five on the Shenondale property. And there may be more appraisals than they have buildings there, so I think I'm going to put in a right to know, asking for, for details of the occurrences and the costs of these appraisals. It's, it's something, it seems to me to be something that goes on forever, and it's just, just, it just grates on me as something being wrong. With regard to the settlement agreement with Applied Landscape Technologies, I think that one way or another, the public is entitled to, to know the cost or the benefit of that legal matter. It's, I can't believe that it's a sealed item. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. Anyone else for courtesy of the floor? Yes.
Hi, Peter Clark, Audubon. Number one, thank you guys for your service and everything that you're doing for the community. This is way better in person than it is on YouTube, just want to say that. Just want to say that. Absolutely, absolutely. It's, it's way more engaging. But the, the reason I'm here today is I just wanted to provide an update. I think I had sent a letter right around January 6 or so, following an incident with, with the administration at Arcola. And I, I believe it was circulated to the board, that's my understanding. Out of that, we had a response from Dr. Zerbi, and we had a subsequent meeting with Dr. Shay, Regina, and Dr. Zerbi for follow-up. At that meeting, we spent about two hours covering a wide variety of, of things from the beginning of the year to today, roughly three different incidences with the administration. And we, my, my overall review, my overall discussion, investigation left me with a lot of concern regarding really the administration's handling of different incidents at, at, at Arcola. So from, from my standpoint, I left the meeting with Dr. Zerbi and Dr. Shay, or Regina, very, very happy with their demeanor, excited about kind of next steps in the follow-up and in the overall course of our conversation. I was not, though, happy or content or felt as though we really had follow-up. And I have not heard from Dr. Zerbi or Dr. Regina here since then. We had requested school records over 50 days ago, 60 days ago, and we still have not received those. And I think this is just telling in terms of the lack of following of policy with that administration. So specifically, just to give you a few specifics, we found that board policy 103, nondiscrimination in school classroom practices, violation of PA school, PA Code 22, 12 dot 9. 2018, student discipline, really failure to follow board policy. 235, student rights. 233, which is, which is really the suspension and expulsion policy, again, not followed by the administration. And from my standpoint, as we walk, as we walk through these things, you know, as a parent, I definitely expect the best behavior out of all of our students, and, you know, that's within, within the school and within the community, and we hold them to a high standard. And I think we should, we should also hold our administration to the same standards that we hold our children to, in ensuring that those kids are put in kind of a, the best position to be heard, to be understood, so that we can ultimately achieve the vision of the school, because I think that's why we're all here. So continuing on, that, from an administration's standpoint, we had a grievance 349, bullying from the administration. And then ultimately, violation by the, by the administration of board policy 227, you know, really just on, on account of their own operations and behavior. And that's really the Controlled Substances and Paraphernalia Act, and then the PA Code that goes with that. So that's a, really just a handful of things that we came across over three incidences with the administration. And from my standpoint, I look back and wonder, you know, are, can we do a better job of, number one, auditing the performance of the administration, seeking, seeking outside support and benefit, support and oversight of the administration versus just solely dedicated at the school. And then I'm also interested in understanding what the escalation process is from this point forward, because, you know, I mean, the only thing that I can see from here is, is kind of follow-up board action before we would go anywhere else.
I'm going to have to ask you to wrap it up.
Perfect.
Mr. Clark, thank you.
No, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else for courtesy of the floor? All right, can I get a motion to adjourn? Mr. Winters, and a second, Ms. Drummond, meeting adjourned.